Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco's Council Meeting. It is October 6, 2025. The council thanks you for being part of the city government. At meeting, the council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packs are available at the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. This meeting is also being televised live on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and Microsoft Teams webinar. This and previous council meetings is also available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Brahas.
Present.
Blaisdell.
Here.
Kada.
Here.
Harpster.
Harpster is excused.
Thank you. Peralas.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grimm.
Here.
And Mayor Milne.
I am here.
Thank you.
And tonight, we have some special guests here in the audience, and they're going to do our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by the Go Getter Girl Scouts Troop Number 905 in Pasco to honor the upcoming International Day of the Girl. And then after this, we're going to have Brian Newberry, and I think he's going to speak briefly, he's online, about the great Girl Scout program. So with that, if we could have the Girl Scout Troop lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you for that. It's an honor to have you guys, girls, here. So are we going to have Brian Newberry, who's going to say a few words?
Mayor Milne, thank you very much. Can you hear me okay, sir?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. I just thank you for this opportunity. Also, I just want to uplift the city council for being so welcoming to us. Councilmember Brahas helped us ribbon-cut the store, and since that time, three years ago, we've been able to expand another office space. So in Tri-Cities, Pasco is our foundation. That's our headquarters down there. And we hit over 800 Girl Scouts last there in the Tri-Cities region. And so thank you, Pasco, for leading the way. Over the next month, we're going to have 14 Day of the Girls and 14 different city councils. And you tonight, and Spokane were the first. The Day of the Girl is this Saturday, as you said, sir. And I just really want the girls, if they can hear me, to know that we're celebrating you, girls, tonight, because we want you to know that we want to hear your voice. That for over a decade now, every day on October 11th, we stand up and say, "Girls matter." So girls know that you matter every day to us. Thank you, city council, for recognizing them. Hopefully, they brought you cookies. I always want to say thank you in that way to you all. And next year, these girls are going to have a new cookie for you, next spring, called the Explorer Moors. It's a rocky road-based cookie, sandwich cookie out there. And so anyone who's a big fan of ice cream, hopefully, it's right up your alley. But these girls have done hundreds of hours of service over the last year. We finished up over 7,100 members between adults and girls. That's only the second time since 2013. So we're a growth organization. I think we'd all agree, by unanimous vote, that we want more Girl Scouts in the world. And those Go Getters standing in front of you, Vanessa has done such an incredible job with them. They're over 100 strong now. So I'll let you continue on with your business, girls. I'm really sorry I couldn't give you a high five there, but please know that you make the world a better place. Mayor, city council members, you also make the world a better place. God bless you, and God bless Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you for those kind words. And I can see some boxes of cookies over there right now. So thank you for that. Hopefully, we'll be able to get a box or something. So anyway, thank you, and thank you for coming. We have...
I just have a few words to say to the troop. Thank you so much. I told you I was not going to forget your names. Jalen, Anai, Sophia, and Jasmine. Thank you so much for being here tonight, and just know that you do matter. And thank you for recruiting other girls and helping other girls be strong and confident, strong little girls. So thank you again, and happy day.
And would your troop leader, would you like a picture with the Girl Scouts, with the city council? I know we should only take a minute or so, but I know most of us have had relatives or daughters that were in the Girl Scouts, so it'd be a big honor to get a picture.
That's great, Mayor. Thank you for doing that with them. We can post that on Facebook for us. Thank you.
Same. Just going to come down to the... We'll stand down there with you guys. Stand with you guys.
Could it have to be crowded in the world?
Crowded in? Maybe if you guys could step forward and stand behind this, it's a little bit taller. All right. Again, with that, we're going to move on to four, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by rule-call vote as one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by the council members, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Number A is approval of meeting minutes for September 15th, September 17th, and September 22nd. Bills and communications proving claims in a total amount of Ordinance number 4789 and resolution number 4651, amending PMC sections to modify start dates of certain city boards and commissions and updating recruitment process for city boards and commissions. We got resolution number 4652, awarding bid number 23467 for Schlegel Park Stormwater Main Replacement to Big D's Construction of Tri-Cities. Resolution number 4653, 2026 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program Allocation Annual Work Plan. Resolution number 4654, 2026 Home Investment Program Allocation and Work Plan. Resolution number 4655, City Retirement Plans Amendment. Resolution number 4656, Pasco Facilities District in a Local Agreement Amendment Regarding Legal Council Services. I, which is resolution number 4657 and ordinance number 4790, Officer Wellness Program and amending the 2025-2026 Operating Budget. Item J, which is resolution number 4658, Sections 108 HUD Loan Refinance. Sections K, resolution number 4659, Office Space Lease at Post Office Building. Is there any on the council that would like to have something removed for later discussion?
Yes.
So we have Councilwoman Blaisdell. Which one would you like to discuss further?
Resolution number 4653, the Community Development Block Grant.
All right. So that's a motion. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
All right. How many of us are moving this later on down in our agenda? All those who approve, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. All right, so we will move that further. Do we want to just have that at the end, or do we want to talk about it sooner?
Wherever. End works for me.
Okay, well, let's move it down by the unfinished business. So with that, if I could get a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can amend my motion to not to approve the consent agenda as read, but to approve the consent agenda as modified.
As amended?
As amended. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mayor Protem Grimm, and we have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. Although, are we going to do a roll call on this?
All righty. Councilmember Brahas.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Kada.
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grimm.
Yes.
And Mayor Milne.
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
All right. So we'll jump to number five, which is proclamations and acknowledgements. I'm not seeing anything listed. So we're going to jump to number six, public comments. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. The item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of the city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or for the purpose posing of questions with the expectation of immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time, and after deliberate process with input from a number of different sources, some questions are best directed to staff members who have access to specific information. Citizens' comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by the mayor. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments and/or submit written information for consideration by the council outside of formal meetings. Lastly, when called upon, please state your name and city or county of residency into the microphone before providing your comments. So with that, do we have anybody in the audience? I know... Mrs. Mayor Milne? Yes.
Is this on?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident. Spokane has had a policy to sell dogs to Washington State University's Veterinary School since 1975. Tri-City Animal Control, now TCAS, has been sending our dogs and cats to WSU for research, then they're killed, since April 16th of 2003. That's over 22 years, and it continues. See Animal Control rehire Angela Zeiler in the Tri-City Herald. Quote, "The dogs euthanized at WSU were ones we would have had to kill anyhow." End quote. Also provide results at Animal Control for the 48 counts of animal cruelty, stolen donation of $375,000, and the missing and/or stolen rainy day fund. See Chambers, Howard, Hernandez, and Zeiler. Animal Control, or TCAS, has no spay neuter services. Animal Control still denies constitutional due process protections as authorized by Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr. And Animal Control still performs botched, cruel, and barbaric euthanasia methods. See files. And now Animal Control, TCAS, issues fines with a usage pay system that puts a bounty on our dogs and cats, and then requires a ransom to be paid to redeem our pets. See tonight's city manager report on Page 4 regarding 232 animal control cases listed. Provide all due process violations and include all usage pay fines. With Pasco's hard-earned, taxpayer-funded CIP budget of well over a half a billion dollars, no funds go for our homeless people, and no funds go for a low-cost spay-neuter clinic for our dogs and cats. And yet, ex-Pasco Mayor Matt Watkins, now Aquatic Center Director, is paid nearly $11,000 per month, plus his travel expenses, and he has plans to spend $280 million or more on a wow factor wave machine. Provide fines paid by Pasco and spot zoning developers Hayden Homes for killing our eight floodplain American bald eagles and their eaglets. See photos. Provide all LID and ULID designs for my property with costs, and a U.S. mail notice and start date sent to me. Include all Pasco officials and Pasco employees. Communications regarding harassment and retaliation against me and my property. Include a permit number 404 for the floodplain sewer station and for the Road 48 Community Park. Provide all groundwater fecal contamination reports caused by the ruptured floodplain sewer line. See photos. All requests are to Pasco via RCW 42.56. All requests are for the record and to put Pasco unnoticed.
All right, well, thank you for that. I'll give you an update on the Aquatic Center. There is no wave factor. I did ask former Mayor Matt Watkins a couple of different times about that, because you know, you brought this to our attention. And if you look at the current way, there is no wave full, nor is there any plans to. So I do appreciate bringing it up, but it is not in there, nor will it be in there at the moment or anytime in the future. So just give me a heads up, if you'd like. We can talk about it more after council, but it was in our meeting two weeks ago, the same question that you keep asking. So just to let you know, I do hear you.
Yes.
Good evening, council. There's some familiar faces and some new faces, so welcome. I'm here tonight to talk about the sewer and water connection fees. Before I get started, I'll just do you something to be passed out, so that can be distributed while I'm speaking. So to provide a little bit of background for those who are new to the council, I used to be Pasco's city engineer and now represent developers doing consulting work in the area. And some of my clients had a lot of concerns about the situation that they've been put in as a result of a project they participated in that the city built. There was a large LED project to bring sewer to around 450 acres in the city, and the sticker price of that was a little bit below $20 million. And Rhea probably knows a lot better than I do the exact value. But so that basically means that those people who were farmers can't be farmers anymore, because you can't pay the debt service on that debt and still be a farmer. So that LED was finalized, and then the city has gone through a number of increases in a lot of their fees, now that this 450 acres of homes, that three or four homes per acre, are locked into having to move forward regardless of what happens to them. So the financial performance of those projects has gone down the toilet because of a lot of these fees, which a lot of them, you haven't seen me, because I've looked at it and said, "It's painful, but it's fair." I think Rhea does a pretty good job usually of getting these fees studied and pretty well balanced out. And so I go through it, and it's not a fun spreadsheet to run, but it's the number that actually pencils out to be what it probably should be, whether I like it or not. When I saw this one, I went through it, and I had some concerns. There wasn't enough information to say for sure kind of if my concerns were validated or not. But a couple of quick things. The... There were some concerns, because buried in there, there was mention of paying for past assets, and there was a really high sticker price, probably $230, $240 million of past built assets included in the new connection fee. And we're also replacing all those things with the new connection fee. So I'm getting a sense that we might be paying for a thing and a thing to be replaced at 50 years, 20 years, and also paying to replace it now in this cycle within that very large sticker price. So it'd be good to check that. There was mention of including interest, which would be good to double-check as well, because if the city didn't pay interest on it, it wouldn't be fair to backcharge its developer interest, even if it's allowed by state law. But I think the state law is assuming you did pay interest. And then the RCW I passed out makes it very clear that the fees the city charges need to be proportionate to the system's capital costs, which the county, city, or town can demonstrate or attributable to the property being charged. So if you can't show that the fees you're proposing are related to our project, then you shouldn't be able to charge those fees. So some early input on that process.
All right, well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else in the audience that would like to...
Good evening. I'm Amber. I live here in Pasco. When you hear the word weed, what comes to mind? Most people think of something unwanted, stubborn, growing where it shouldn't. If I asked you to choose between a dandelion and a rose, most of you would probably call the dandelion the weed. But before you answer too quickly, let's look at what a weed actually is. According to Webster's Dictionary, a weed is a plant that is not valued where it is growing, and is usually of vigorous growth, not valued, growing where it isn't wanted. That definition isn't about the plant itself. It's about the person deciding its worth. A weed isn't defined of what it is. It's defined by who's looking at it. When I was 13, I was sent here to boarding school in Pasco. We were required to work 20 hours a week in a nursery, child labor quietly disguised as a class. My hands were cracked and raw from pulling plants I didn't plant and didn't choose. That was my first lesson in what people call growth. So when someone asks me now if I enjoy gardening, I say, "No." That's the last thing I want to be doing. But I did learn something from it. Even in the smallest green things, we'll fight to live. It will push through gravel, reach for the light, and bloom in places no one planned for. Someone... Some call that stubborn. I call it survival. And that's where I find myself today. I've worked hard to grow roots in the community, to contribute, to help, to make things better. Yet lately, I felt the quiet pull of hands trying to root me, not because I've done harm, but because I don't fit the image someone else wants for this garden. So yes, I'm choosing to step carefully, even to leave this environment for my own peace and safety, but make no mistake, that doesn't mean I'm gone because I am the weed you haven't seen the last of. Pulling up, and I'll grow again somewhere new. Cut me down, and my roots will reach deeper. Scatter me, and my message of fairness, of truth, of community will spread wider than before. So when you see another so-called weed, standing tall where no one expected it to, I hope you'll remember this moment, because sometimes the thing that refuses to die isn't the problem, it's the proof of life. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Go in once, twice, three times. Okay. Guess we're done with that section. We'll move on to item number seven.
Mayor, we do have one public comment online.
Okay. Well, sorry, I didn't see that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Give us just a minute here. The person with a number ending at 2591, you can unmute yourself and be able to speak. Can you hear us? We'll take their comments, and we can move forward.
Okay. So move us on to item number seven, reports from committees and/or officers. Do we have any reports from anything the council did this past week? Start off with Councilwoman Blaisdell.
Well, I think we've been absent for the last two weeks, right? Okay, so I'll start with two weeks ago. I went to Felines and Firefighters, and I believe, I'm not sure the number, but we... While I was there, they adopted some cats. I'm not exactly sure how many. Maybe Director Rice can answer that, or he's looking. I also went to Coffee with the Cop, and it was National Coffee with the Cop Day. So there was Washington State Troopers, City Pasco. There was a lot of community members. That was nice to be able to mingle with everyone. And then I also went to the elected leaders reception put on by Tri-City Regional Chamber and the Home Builders Association. And last but not least, River Fest was this last Saturday, beautiful weather. And that was with, I guess, all of the community partners throughout the Tri-Cities were there. So Port of Pasco was there, Visit Tri-Cities was there, City Richland, City Kennewick. Some of the tribes were there. There was a lot of people there, so I think that's about it.
Well, that's a busy last couple, two weeks. Councilman Joe Connor.
I attended Fields of Faith yesterday, put on by Fellowship of Christian Athletes. And that was great. That was over at Lampton Stadium. I counted, I think, 22 schools that were represented there, including the clubs from Chihuahua and Pasco High School and many others. And so it was just great being with the kids, praying for them. There's a lot of junior hires out there that want to get involved. They're getting excited about it. And so that was a lot of fun, catching up with a lot of people from Pasco that were out there.
All right, well, thank you. Not seeing any other comments, so let's...
Excuse me, Mayor. Just to follow up, Councilwoman Blaisdell's report that we had 17 cats and four dogs placed in new homes that day. So we appreciate your attendance and the community's attendance, and of course, our fire chief and his firefighters' attendance that day as well. Thank you.
Well, it's good to see so many cats and some dogs. So good job, good work to everybody. Jump to number eight, which is hearing and council action on ordinances and resolutions related to there, too. We got item number 8A is public hearing, Fat Beam franchise agreement. And we're going to start off with Director Maria Sara.
Good evening, Mayor and council member. For this item, I actually am going to introduce to you Mary Heather Ames, Deputy Public Works Director, and she will give us an overview of this franchise.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I don't have a clicker. Should I just say down arrow? This one? I don't know how to do things. Yeah, perfect. Okay. All right. So what we're talking about this evening is a franchise agreement. And a franchise process is something that's governed by many regulations. It starts at the federal level. In 1996, the Telecommunications Act ensured that local jurisdictions would do this, would provide franchises for businesses that cover telecommunications services. And that the franchise means that they're able to use public rights-of-way for the purpose of telecommunications. So state law allows us as the city to regulate the placement of those telecommunications facilities in the right-of-way, but we cannot prohibit them entirely. And then our own regulations here in Pasco, we have a portion of the code that provides for a franchise agreement, which covers the use of the right-of-way for those telecommunications purposes. So that whole process requires a public hearing, and that's why we're here this evening. The business today that we're considering is Fat Beam. Fat Beam, this information is from their website. Their mission is to advance innovation in communities and businesses by delivering reliable and scalable fiber connectivity in the Western United States. They say they're the fastest-growing fiber provider in the West. They have over 150,000 fiber miles, and they're in eight states and more than 150 cities. And they've been here in Pasco since 2015 and had a 10-year franchise that has expired, and we're looking to renew. This map shows their current fiber layout, the location. The purple, very small, but noticeable purple dots are schools within Pasco. So they have really worked on serving the schools for Pasco. And so this franchise agreement includes conditions that they must obtain permits for construction and installation, maintenance, repair, or removal of any of their facilities. For us, this is a 10-year agreement that's a standard length. It'll begin this year in 2025 and expire in 2035. And as I mentioned earlier, this is a renewal since they've been here since 2015. The fiber optic lines that we're talking about, they're facilities. They are buried, so within our right-of-way, but under the ground. And then this is a non-exclusive franchise, which means that other companies can be in the same portion of right-of-way. We could have two different providers using the same right-of-way. And in fact, we do have places where we'll have not only some telecommunications, but maybe some other utilities as well within the right-of-way. Like, it gets used for a lot of things, so like power, for example. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions and then encourage you to move forward with the public hearing.
All right. With that, do we have any council? Start off with Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, you answered a lot of my questions as you were explaining, um, is this exclusive to schools only?
No, they are not an exclusive provider to schools, they provide to businesses and residences, I believe.
Under a different name?
You know, um, I think maybe in other locations, they have, uh, provided to, um, to residences. I don't, I don't know honestly how much marketing they're doing for residential within Pasco.
Is there a way, um, this is probably for staff, is there a way to find out if they're doing a DBA or, or what other?
You know.
Games they function under?
Sure.
Just curious.
Um. What, uh, what I understand is that their headquarters are in Idaho and they do cover multiple states. So my guess is that they have not, um, gotten DBA status in Washington State, but I can certainly find out.
That'd be good, maybe just an email would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'm not seeing any other questions, so I guess we'll open the public hearing. So do we have any members from the audience that would, uh, like to make a comment or statement? Going once. Going twice. Going three times. All right, let's close the public hearing. And with that, well, thank you for the report, and we'll move on to number nine, ordinance and resolutions not related to hearings. So nine A is a quasi judicial ordinance, number four, seven, nine, two, airway rezone from C one to R one. And usually have Eric Ferguson, is he on the, the line or?
He's online.
Okay, well, if he wants to. Ask his question, then we can move forward on this.
Can you hear me okay, Mr. Mayor?
Um, we could kinda hear you, it was kinda muffled, I don't know if you wanna try?
About now. How about now?
A little bit better.
Okay, I'll try to talk, uh, as best I can here. Uh, sorry, I wasn't able to be there tonight, uh, this is a quasi judicial hearing. Uh, it's, uh, proceeding is to render a final decision on the materials presented. It's defined as a proceeding in which the council defines the legal rights, duties or privileges of specific parties in a hearing proceeding or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies and the hearing must be, uh, fair in three respects. Form, substance and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. Any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council member personally. Whether there's been any prejudgment of the issues prior to the hearing of the facts. Whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than the staff prior to this hearing. And finally, any other conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known. Hearing none, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in the proceedings? Hearing none, move forward, please.
All right, well, thank you for that. So it looks like we're gonna have, uh, a report by Director Haley Metzen.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, council, tonight before you is an ordinance that would rezone one parcel addressed as six, one, three, West Clark Street. Um, from C one. Retail business to R one low-density residential. And this request aligns with the comprehensive plan, land use mapping, um, which designates this area as low-density residential. Little bit of background here, there was a public hearing that was held at the hearing examiner on August thirteenth, two thousand and five, and the applicant requested the rezone. Um, and after testimony and review, the hearing examiner found the request met the applicable criteria for this rezone and recommended approval. Um, since the approval, there have been no timely appeals that were filed for this recommendation. And as you can see on the screen here, there is that parcel shown in red, this is in an existing neighborhood with existing homes. And this portion of the street is zoned. I'll show you on this map, commercial currently, that's shown in the pink there. And so those, those lots in this area all have that pink zoning commercial, so there will be a little bit of a gap there. But the overarching land use designation for this site is low-density residential. So you can see all of those parcels are yellow, which means the long-term plan for this area is for these homes to be low-density residential. And taking forward this tonight, and then when we update the comprehensive plan, we may look at this area closer, um, along with other areas with different designations and zoning. On the, on the screen there, and. A few more procedural details to go through. Here, um, when reviewing a zone, a rezone application, the hearing examiner looks at consistency with the comprehensive plan and the compatibility with existing land uses and zoning in the area. And we believe this designation is compatible with the surrounding homes. And staff is recommending approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions, technical questions, oh, this one is not a public hearing, so happy to answer any questions that you may have, thank you.
All right, is there anybody on the dice that has any questions or, or, uh, Director Metzen? Let's start off with, uh, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, just one quick question, do we know what business was functioning downstairs?
Um, I do not off the top of my head, I, I imagine it was an office-type business, um, in there. But I'm, I'm going off memory here, so I'm not exactly sure. There was a business in there before and they'd like to convert it back to residential.
And so is the request to use both first floor and second floor for residential?
Yes.
Or just the top?
Yep, it, the applicant could do a home occupation if it's zoned residential and there's, you know, some home office options and some other late home occupation op- options they could go. But as far as I know, it's using the whole, um, structure as a, a single-family dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I'm not seeing any other questions or comments on this, so if I could get a motion, Mayor Portem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four, seven, nine, two, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located north of West Clark Street between North Sixth Avenue and North Fifth Avenue. And further authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Portem Grim. And we have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Looks like a passage unanimously. All right, so let's move on to nine B, which is also quasi judicial. Quasidicial, if I can say that right, ordinance number four, seven, nine, three, SG Land Management LLC zoning determination, R three, portion to annex property. And do I have, uh, Mr. Ferguson? Do his little question again, since it's a.
Quasi judicial?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great, thank you, hang on just a moment, sorry, I'm trying to switch between screens. All right, so, uh, same, uh, situation as last time, it's a quasi judicial hearing, excuse me, um, or proceeding to render a final decision on the materials presented. It's defined as a proceeding in which the council defines the legal rights, duties and privileges of specific parties in a hearing proceeding or other contested proceeding. The appearance of fairness doctrine applies and the hearing must be fair in three respects, form, substance and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. Any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally. Whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to hearing of the facts. Whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than the staff prior to this hearing. And any conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and partially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make them known. Hearing none, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in the proceedings? Hearing none, please proceed.
All right, well, thank you for that, and again, we got, uh, Director Haley Metzen.
Thank you, tonight's ordinance in front of you, um, if approved, would finalize the zoning, um, assignment for a portion of recently annexed area under ordinance number four, seven, eight, six. And this property has gone through the annexation. Let me see, sorry, my. Clicker isn't working. Yeah, next slide.
What was that?
And next slide.
What was the ordinance number again?
So the previous ordinance that was adopted related to the annexation was four, seven, eight, six, that's why it doesn't match up to the numbers on the agenda tonight. And this portion of the property, and I'll just skip to the map, actually, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide. So this is the, um, area that was annexed previously into the city. And tonight's motion is for one of the two properties and the zoning assignment proposed on this twenty-two acre site is R three medium-density residential zoning. And staff has determined that the zoning is consistent with the Broadmoor master plan. And, um, just an overview of the site there on the screen, the subject property is located south of Burns Road, east of Shoreline Road and west of Road one twenty-two and north of the future Sandofer Parkway. And this area was formally zoned as RS twenty under the Franklin County zoning ordinance. And upon annexation, the city is required to assign a zoning determination for this property, which is proposed as R three. Um, the hearing examiner held a public hearing on this on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And after reviewing the rec- the record, the hearing examiner found that this project was consistent with the comprehensive plan and Broadmore master plan and compatible with the existing surrounded, surrounding uses. And the hearing examiner has recommended approval. And there have been, been no appeals that were received on this property. And I will just note that the property, um, next to this, a part of the annexation, um, over to the east that borders city limits. This, this, that property was also part of the annexation I cited earlier, and the zoning proposal for that property is R four. And that will be coming to the council as a separate item on Oc- Oc- October twentieth. And so these items are coming separately but associated with the original annexation. And that other one was slowed down a little bit, there was some feedback from the neighborhood that we'll touch on, on the twentieth. Um, but this project has not received any formal appeals with this zoning designation proposed from the public. Um, so with that, staff is recommending approval of this rezone application, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, do we have any members of the council with a question for Director Metzen, we're gonna start off with Mayor Portem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Ms. Metzen, for the presentation. If you would be so kind as to explain for the public, you said no appeals were made. But, um, here in the agenda item, you know, I see lots of names here, you know, people that spoke up in opposition of this project. Would you, just for, for the sake of everybody, tell us what the difference is?
Sure, so there, the, the, the information you're noting in the packet is likely comments from the hearing or comments that were submitted in opposition. And if you submit an appeal, there are certain requirements for appeals that need to be, um, rendered before we can take it in. So if you appeal a development and say, I don't like development next door, I don't want housing here, that doesn't really meet the appeal criteria. So we, we've tried to, um, send folks that are emailing staff the appeal criteria. And, you know, that, that is required to be met in order, in order for it to be considered an appeal. So I believe there are several people with opposition to this development and just development in general in the area, concerns about traffic. But they didn't really necessarily have a, something technical to appeal, such as, I don't think the city reviewed this properly against the Broadmore EIS. And, you know, there's a stipulation here that isn't working, but if the applicant follows all the codes and is consistent with the plans, there's not, there's not a, a peel option where you can formally appeal the hearing examiner's recommendation because you don't support the project.
All right, I appreciate the clarification, because, yeah, I think there's some people who, you know, may feel that, hey, you know what, we, you know, we, we did speak up and not really understand the, the difference between, you know, just speaking out in opposition versus an appeal. This is probably, I think, since I've been on council, probably the most, um, opposition I've seen to a project. Um, do we know the, the numbers between number fourteen and fifteen, the eleven written comments, were they the same people or do you know, it doesn't say here, were those in addition to the ones who appeared and spoke?
I believe it was a mix. Yeah, it wouldn't, there, there might be slight overlap, but based on the number of comments we received on the project altogether, it wouldn't surprise me if that was in addition to the comments that we received.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that, let's, uh, jump to Councilman, uh, Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, um, yeah, I was gonna say the same thing that Council, Mayor Mayor Portem, uh, Grim was saying. I guess, you know, there wasn't, there wasn't a formal appeals, but I, I definitely was watching a lot of the hearings examiner meetings when, um, these two parcels were being deliberated. I mean, there was a lot of people in here that were against, um, seeing the character of their area change, uh, right across the street. Uh, you know, I heard their concerns, I seen a lot of their concerns on Facebook, next door. I, I don't have a problem with what we're doing, especially with regards to the Broadmore master plan, I just, are we ready for? Six to twenty-nine units per acre in this area? Everywhere, I mean, we're not gonna have any traffic issues, I mean, I, I'm seeing things on social media about the go departments and all the traffic issues we're having there, parking issues we're having there. And so, you know, i- it may fit our bill, you know, you, you guys look across our Broadmore master plan, it's consistent with that. Compatible with surrounding uses, no special conditions or covenant agreements required, supports orderly growth within UGA, but we both know growth is a little bit more messier than that. I, I know, I, I think the main issue I always tell people is that, that's why they need to pay attention when the city is doing these comprehensive plans, these proper master plans, because they can influence the type of growth that we're gonna see in certain areas of the city. Yeah, I, I think, I think for me, I, I think at the end of the day, we need to really, um, give the public about how we wanna grow. Because I, I don't like seeing room, rooms full of people who are totally against development. I think we need to, I mean, we need some type of buffering, there's really no buffer between these two parcels, essentially, and then across, across the street. So I can understand their concerns and, you know, maybe some of their arguments don't bring merit. You know, they don't have an engineering degree, they're not gonna sit here and get all technical, but, you know, their quality of life is gonna be impacted. Uh, our quality of life is impacted anyways when we see, you know, big townhomes go across, single-family, uh, go across from single-family homes to bigger apartments to. So, I mean, there's things here that I think we need to really understand. Um, again, I'm not, I'm not against the development, but, you know, i- is there some type of buffer that, that we're gonna need to do later? I, I don't truly believe we have the infrastructure right there, I mean, do we even have the water rights? Do we have water rights to, for this whole parcel?
If they don't have the correct infrastructure in place, we can't approve the development. So they need to demonstrate that when they come in with development permits, which this is just assigning, you know, the annexation and the zoning, and then it's on the applicant to show that the utilities. The traffic level of services addressed to the same level that the neighborhoods around there needed to meet as well, um, when they were built recently. And we review all of that, so I don't know, um.
What about schooling, I think someone brought up a good point about, uh, that school is at capacity and yet we're gonna do all these homes, although they're probably gonna have kids, right? Unless these homes and stuff don't have kids in them?
Yeah.
I mean, is that something that we consider when we, you know, say, we bless the earth and say, yep, they're good to go?
Yes, this, the school district is aware of the growth in this area, we do have monthly meetings with the various groups in the area. And, um, yeah, the school is notified of this in plans for it, when they update their fees each year, they, they're aware of our growth figures. And during the comprehensive plan process, we'd involve them as a stakeholder too.
And, well, the, these two parcels are here pretty much fill this out in that, that area at this point, right? Next month, I mean, whatever the plan development that it's gonna be, I mean, below that is, is, I mean, that's the aquatic center and all that, isn't that, below that?
No, this is, this is a little bit.
Oh, no, it's more north, but I'm saying, yeah.
Further out west, um, so Aquatic Center would be a little bit out to the east.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I think, uh, this is, this absolutely, these areas of the, or, or west area, we're gonna have to really look at, at least, I'm going to, because I, I definitely hear their concerns from a lot of the residents who have came in consistently in the past year. Regards to a lot of the growth that has happened around them, a lot of that infill, so, those are questions, I, I didn't really have questions, more just comments really, but just wanted them for the record, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you for that, I know, uh, I've been trying to get like a park out there, I know sometimes a park would be, well, good to separate different areas, but that's not the case here, we don't have the land, so, uh. But there is always the dream, so, uh. So uh anyway, with that, I don't see any other questions, so can I get a motion, Mayor Portem?
Of course, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number forty-seven ninety-three, assigning R three medium density residential zoning to SG Land Management LLC portion of the annexation area as recommended by the hearing examiner and further authorize publication by summary only.
Certainly.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mayor Portem Grim, and we have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
So it was a five to one with uh Councilman or Mayor Portem Grim and dissension. All right, so we are gonna move on to nine C, which is resolution number four, six, six, zero, health insurance fund loan. And if we could get Director Garcia to give some input on this.
Good evening. Uh so tonight we have um a resolution of authorizing an interfund loan for six point five million from the Economic Development Fund to the Medical Dental Insurance Fund. Um, so overall, interfund loans are a commonly used financing tool between uh funds. And overall, the the fund that's in need receives um a flexible loan with reasonable interest rates and no loan origination costs. So it's a low low cost option. Uh, and then the lending fund uh receives interest income um with that loan. So the purpose of this specific loan is to stabilize the self-funded medical plan um that the city offers. Um, and overall, it's been it's faced uh financial pressures uh from various factors over the last few years. Uh, one of some of those factors have been um flat revenue streams and uh increased claims and just the overall rising um of healthcare costs. So the plan has historically been cost effective. However, the premiums haven't um been adjusted since two thousand fourteen. So that's uh caused that flat revenue stream. And we also have um composite premium rates, which means that the same rate is paid regardless of the family size of the members. So um with the increasing cost in medical cost and the um increasing enrollment in families, um that has just hasn't aligned with industry standards and the the plan has just been strained. Uh, so at this point, the medical plan is running at a deficit and it's at a risk of falling below the requirements of the state for having a self-funded uh plan. Uh, so this interfund loan would help stabilize the fund and would help restore the reserves that are required by the state. And it would also um allow time for some planned corrections to uh to kind of revive the plan. Uh, so some of those corrections include increasing the premiums, which would be increasing the premiums for both the employer portion and the employee portion, and also restructuring the rate structure uh to move away from the the composite rate, so to move more towards industry standards. And the loan would be for ten years, and it's at a four percent interest with the first payment starting next year. And overall, the the Economic Development Fund would receive about one point four million in interest over that ten-year term. And if there's um years with surplus in the medical fund, that loan could always be repaid sooner. Um, so some of the alternatives are um we can, council can modify the terms of that interfund loan or um or deny the loan and we can, uh which would mean that the plan would have to be closed, this self-funded plan, and the city would have to move towards a uh private insured plan and which would increase uh rates significantly, both for employer and employee. Um, overall, on the city side, it would be about an increase of um approximately six point eight million uh on top of what's already budgeted for that. So it'd be a significant increase. Um, and on top of that, moving towards a private insurer would require a three-year commitment. And um and the rates would estimate to go up about eight to ten percent annually.
All right, with that, I know talking with other council members, wanted more information. Uh, wanted to think this one over, so um now would be a chance to ask those questions. And uh I don't believe we wanna make a motion, but I know we do have questions at this time. And then we'd like to kick it down to our next uh regular meeting to vote on it then. If as long as all the questions are answered, I do understand the time is of the essence. We do need to get this done. I know the council wants to get stuff done, but we also wanna make sure that we get to sleep at night and make sure that we're not rushing anything through. So with that, let's start all the way to the the my far left. And so we'll start off with Councilman uh Peralis.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess my first question is, uh, I mean, how did we get here? You know, I I I guess I was on the council like like two years ago. So when were we in the negative? And if we were negative like two years ago, like why wasn't that brought to our attention during that time? So I guess that's my first question.
Yeah, so there have been adequate reserves, uh really this last year and really this year have been where um all the it's almost a perfect storm of various factors that came came into play. So last year, there was a national hack to a um healthcare processing site, which really delayed um claims altogether. So we weren't really realizing seeing those claims come in. Uh, then later in the year, there was a um our actual third party uh filed for bankruptcy, which was um, you know, didn't impact just us. So that was also an item that was out of our control. Uh, so that also delayed claims. So um once we changed over to a new provider, um this year's when all those claims. So really, we've this year have been paying claims from some have been from two thousand twenty-three, from late two thousand twenty-three. So um of that, those two items have been uh large factors in it. Um, also just overall inflation in healthcare costs have contributed to that. So there's a a few items, um, you know, it didn't help that the rates haven't been increased since two thousand fourteen. Um, but overall, it was stable. But again, those uh factors in the past year and a half really just amplified that need.
So I mean, we're taking essentially money from our savings, right? This is from our.
So essentially, um it it is from um our savings. But uh if you were just giving the money to the healthcare fund, I would categorize that as taking money from the savings and utilizing it. Um, in this case, the healthcare fund will pay it back over the next ten years. So all of the premiums that we will be collecting, the increase in the premiums that we've been communicating uh with staff includes a payback to the general fund. So essentially, you're loaning it out if you've ever loaned money from your 401K. This is very similar to that, where you're loaning money from your savings account uh and you're paying yourself interest, uh and you're paying yourself back over time as well.
But again, so again, this is but this is in our we're taking money from our reserves to pay for this.
Uh, for for our Economic Development Fund, yes.
Okay, so, you know, we've talked about our budget, we talked about Broadmore. So does this put us in a predicament if we don't see that development out of Broadmore? Is this gonna hamper us because we essentially gave another fund six million dollars? So we're six million dollars poorer now?
Uh, no, uh because Economic Development Fund has uh a lot of other funds in there mixed in as well. Um, so it is it is at a healthy level. Um, and the the reserves that we have counted from Economic Development Fund um is not part of this particular equation. So there's enough funds there that you could loan this out uh for the next ten years and be comfortable. That's not to say something catastr- catastrophic does not happen, and we do need these funds, at which point you would have to make a decision on increasing the premiums quite significantly, maybe for one year, pay all of this back uh and utilize those funds.
Are we so we're not gonna see any impacts with anything in the fut- in the here in the coming future um regards to spending?
N- not from our projections. There will be no projects that will be impacted. Um, and again, if something something really catastrophic would have to happen for us to need this need these funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, let's go on to Councilwoman Blaisdell. Thank you. Okay, well, I guess we gotta wait, so let's jump to Mayor Portem Grim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And really, some of my comments and I guess questions follow along the lines of um Councilmember Peralis. As far as um that was one of my concerns, and I appreciate you um bringing that up, Ms. Sigdel, is if we loan this money out, you know, we're trying to grow and develop the the city. You know, is there the the potential for something we could be missing at that point? Or not being able to support or like Councilmember Peralis says, you know, not being able to loan service or something out there abroad more? I guess I I'd like to say to staff, thank you for bringing this up too, by the way. You know, this is um, you know, not necessarily an an easy thing because it looks like, you know, this has been ongoing for a long time. But, you know, this council has kind of prided itself on transparency and everything. So I appreciate this uh being out in the open and kind of, you know, what do we do from it from here? And I know this is not the first time, I think, since I've been on council, we have loaned between um between buckets, as um someone would say. But um, you know, I think this is just a a big amount. And um and the fact that it's kind of been just unmet for a long time. I mean, I appreciate the the heart for trying to do the very best we can for our for our team members, for staff, and trying to keep those rates low and um, you know, keep contributions for the sake of retention, you know, at a minimum. So I I am grateful for keeping an eye on that. But, you know, holy smoke, six and a half million bucks is a lot of money. And so, yeah, I would like to let this percolate for a couple of weeks, Mr. Mayor, and um bring it back in a couple of weeks.
And I do wanna add that, um, I understand that it is a high dollar amount. Um, a majority of that is uh due to reserves that are required to be held in the fund. So the state requires sixteen weeks average of claims to be on hand uh just for that delay in claims to come in. So uh like four point one million of that amount is for reserves. So it's it's almost like we just have to have that amount in the fund. It's not necessary that the fund is in the hole that much. It's um it's running at a deficit uh about two million, but four million of that is for reserve requirements.
Perfect. And so that's the sixteen weeks, Ms. Garcia, is the the four million?
Yes, and if uh there's changes to, again, if there's changes in behavior or um in claims, that reserve requirement would be reduced, so that would be another reason why we could pay it faster. So if it's it's just this year, based on on our estimates because of the high claims we've been seeing, the estimate that we need at the end of this year would be at four point one million.
Okay, and I see that all in there. So just for the sake of the public, where's the fund at now in case I missed that in here?
So right now, it is at a deficit of two million, two point almost two point five, yeah.
Uh, two point five million, and then so then we would need really that the six million that's being sought here just to bring it up to the four million for the the reserve and everything like that, to meet that threshold of the minimum reserve?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, it wasn't in the hole, this six point five. It's just that's what's needed to stabilize the fund and to meet the requirements of the state.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
All right, now we'll go on to Councilwoman Blaisdell.
So I guess my only question is, is this something that you need a decision on tonight? Because we it wasn't on the workshop the last time we had the workshop meeting. So I guess my concern is, why wasn't it put on the workshop meeting for us to ponder and ask more questions? And so I'm just assuming that this is a very, very time sensitive subject.
It is, but it can wait till the next regular meeting. Uh, one of the reasons why it was um delayed intentionally, we wanted it to come to the previous workshop. But one of the reasons is we were waiting on our um renewal rates, which uh didn't just, they just came in uh early last week. So that's one of the reasons why we bring it to you now, uh just because we, as soon as we got the information, we wanted to present it to council. But we don't need a decision today. We can wait till the next meeting.
Okay, we just personally, because of the amount of money this is, and I would like to wait until the following meeting, just so I can ask more questions. Um, and I would also like when Harold is here, um, just to get more clarification for me personally.
So I think that's the what what staff is saying, it'll be in two weeks. That way I'll give you a chance to meet with Harold one-on-one and uh hopefully resolve any issues. So let's jump to Councilwoman uh Peralis.
Thank you. Um, this is probably the whole team, I think. Um, the delay, this is for clarification, I work in health insurance. The delay is in particular to the open enrollment date. I know for a lot of insurance plans, it begins October first. You cannot speak about any of the changes until that release date. When did you learn of the changes?
So the renewal rates that we received were uh just last week when we received those. So um, yeah, we didn't have what the estimate would be for the what.
Right, and so so what I'm trying to get at is that you could not give us any further information because you did not have it based on waiting on the state to allow you to release any news. So there's there's delays there out of your control. We understand that. I understand that. Um, I I know there's also pressure because open enrollment is now. When does it close for city staff?
So um the plan is to have open enrollment the first two weeks of inaugural, yes, perfect.
I don't wanna interrupt, so I'm just silently sitting back there. Um, so open enrollment is gonna be scheduled for the first two weeks in November. Um, and uh just to what Griselda said, we were working with our broker very frantically because we really were considering, do we just not go with our self-funded plan? Um, it was really a strong consideration of going to the state plan like PEB or AWC, um which if we don't get this loan, um I think that is in the options, we will get kicked out of our self-funded plan and be forced in. We'll still have to pay this money, so the money is still gonna be owed. And then the amount for the AWC plan is going to end up being more than what we will currently be spending if we were to stay self-funded.
Um, so I I agree that we should move forward, uh but I also understand that there's more questions and um but I also understand that there's a need to come to a decision quick because of the open enrollment timeframe. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? All right, well, again, uh, recommend that our, it feels like I think we need to put this on the next uh.
Mayor, um, uh, city manager Stuart has his hand raised, so.
Okay.
All right, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to add a couple of things. So some of one of the contributing factors to how you got to where you're at. Typically, self-insurance plans will have three stopgap insurances in place. Uh, Pasco has only had one of the three in place. Uh, so the three stopgap insurances that you would typically want to have in place would be um on individual claims. So if you have a claim, say comes in at uh three hundred thousand dollars, but you have a stopgap that you basically have an insurance that you pay the first two hundred thousand and then the insurance um company pays whatever is over and above that. So that example of a three hundred thousand dollar claim, the city would pay the two hundred thousand and then the insurance would pay the additional hundred thousand to the three hundred thousand that you have had in place for um the life of your self-insurance policy. But the two others that you don't have, one would be a stopgap insurance for your um pharmaceutical claims, your X claims. And then the third one is 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 what I would say is accumulative stopgap that in any given uh year, you would only have a maximum amount of claim that that the plan would pay out, otherwise the your insurance would pay out that difference. So let's say, for example, that you buy a stopgap of five million dollars in claims. And if you have a six million dollar claim year, the city's only paying five million dollars. The insurance would pay that other million dollars. The the plan that staff has worked out and has approved at this point implements those two other stopgap insurances to be in place as well. That helps minimize some of the risk uh for the city in future plan years. So that was another contributing factor, I believe, uh through this process um that staff has remedied in addition to implementing the the tier rates and some of the other things. Uh, I would agree with what some of uh with what staff has told you that um other alternatives are more expensive. And even if we switch to some of this, your the city is still gonna have to pay some of this six and a half million dollars to uh um pay off the deficit in in the health insurance fund. And I think that there is value in continuing to move forward with the self-insurance plan uh with these safeguards being implemented. Um, and then in addition is every year when we um. Um, and then in addition is every year when we, um, review the medical claims and the and the renewal, that's the time to look at, uh, potential increases of health insurance costs and premiums, uh, across the board, uh, so that we don't repeat this problem again in the future. So anyway, I understand the council's, uh, hesitancy. Um, I will state that we did copy council in on some email communications in the week, we talked about it in closed session, um, after the last meeting. So we have tried to keep council informed on this, uh, so it wasn't as much of a surprise, but some of this data and information does come in at the last minute, which is not untypical with how these renewals go. And we had added challenge this year that with the, uh, the bankruptcy of our third-party administrator, we didn't have a lot of the data that the health insurance providers like to see, particularly in in history, uh, to provide for for this year's, uh, renewal. So that had some added challenges to, to the process this year, but I think what staff has recommended at this point is the best alternative going forward, both financially and, uh, maintaining a quality health insurance for employees that helps us to recruit and retain, uh, employees going forward. So health insurance can be a very touchy subject for staff and can create some very significant morale issues to the organization. And I think that staff understands where we're at and where we're going, and while it may not be ideally what we would all like, I think we're, we're understanding of it, and I appreciate the patience and the understanding of the staff, uh, through this process here over the last few weeks. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have at this time as well.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for our City Manager Harold Stewart? Not seeing any, so yes, so we're directing staff to the next regular city council meeting, resolution number four six six zero one. We'll vote in in two weeks. All right, so we're actually going to have the nine D, which is the part E, resolution number four six five three that we moved off the consent agenda, which is the Community Development Block Grant Program, and we would like to go over that. Do you want, uh, Director Mattson to, I guess, want you to give us a little bit about it, and hopefully come to decision on that, too?
Sure. So this item was workshopped, um, with the city council at the last meeting or the meeting before that, and this relates to the Community Development Block Grant allocations and annual work plan. And what was presented to you was the, and I, thank you, Jesse, um, the allocations are up on the screen, and I believe that's what council may wish to discuss tonight. These were, um, the planning commission was provided, three different options with a mix of different funding allocations, and this was what was presented to the city council at the last meeting. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have related to this, and I'm also joined by Kristen Webb, our CDBG administrator, tonight, too, to help if if there are questions.
All right, well, let's start off with Councilwoman Blaisdell.
Okay, my specific questions have to do with PSK. Um, so if I remember correctly, um, we replaced the walk-in freezer, the fridge equipment, a mixer, ice machine, oven, dishwasher, and we also upgraded two walk-up service windows, the hood, two griddles, two grills, two ovens, two fryers, and then new equipment combined in oven and a, and we also purchased the parklet, and then a third walk-up window for ready-to-eat food. Is that correct?
Yes, that sounds correct.
Okay, and we also upgraded the HVAC system?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess my question is, is there any money left over from what you have been allocated in the past?
No, those funds have been expended, a lot of those funds were, um, American Recovery Act dollars, which had a, had expenditure timeline, so those had been expended, uh, due by the deadline as required. Uh, some of the other funds were CDBG funds, which had an annual expenditure date, and those also have been expended by the required dates.
Okay, and so with that being said, I guess what else would we need twenty-five thousand for if we've upgraded majority of the equipment that has been utilized for PSK?
Uh, I have a list here, I'm, uh, trying to pull up here that was shared. Um, so, um, some of the remaining items, um, there was our dishwasher garbage disposal, which came attached with the original dishwasher, which was a couple of decades old from as I understand. Um, to add a second ice machine due to the additional client load, particularly several drink makers, we're finding that our ice machine is not keeping up for the Friday, Saturday, Sunday events. Um, additionally, um, to the third walk-up window that we, uh, just at, third ready-to-eat walk-up food window, uh, that we just added, we were hoping to add a fridge and a prep table that would allow other clients to use that shared equipment, so it'd free up the shared equipment to whoever's dedicated themselves to that window. Um, there is a traditional, uh, remaining, uh, water heater, a tank-style water heater that is inefficient. Uh, we just recently replaced the other tank-style water heater with an instant water heater, so we're hoping to add a second instant water heater to improve less efficiency, not store that hot water as well as improve on-demand services due to the number of clients. Uh, and then if funds allow, based on the cost, we do have a double oven, which has the option to add its own vent hood system. And by adding a vent hood system specifically to that oven, it would allow that oven to be placed outside of the traditional vent hood, which is really required more for hot cooking greasy foods, over like a stove top, a flat top, a griddle, or a deep fryer, so, and there's only certain equipment that has those options. So that would be the hopes, uh, at this time of the estimate when we applied for the funds, the twenty-five thousand dollars appeared to be, would be enough at today's current prices. However, by the time we get approval and and purchase those, it, I'm hoping they hold that price, but I don't know for sure.
Okay, my next question is, um, is PSK making enough revenue from the vendors that we have in there to handle the monthly expenses?
Uh, no, as I broke down in a recent email, um, at this time, based on current revenues and sale, or current revenues and expenses for this year up through August, so two-thirds of the year, we did a quick projection forward, and I believe that, um, just based on those, it was an annual deficit of about fifty-nine thousand dollars based on those, uh, specific expenses and positions budgeted in that area. In addition, there are some other, um, areas, um, our farmers market contract manager uses some of his service to support PSK. We have a rec specialist that spends a couple of hours down there. I have a department assistant who pays all the invoices, who spends a couple of hours monthly to process invoices, and then myself probably use eight to ten hours per month, um, and then just an unknown number of hours from facility finance and IT as required. So I'm just guesstimating based in the, taking that, that, those projections forward and the information as provided, that probably brings the annual deficit to a hundred thousand dollars to support the kitchen as it runs currently.
I guess my, um, biggest concern is number, and let me make this clear, I am a huge supporter of the Pasco Specialty Kitchen by any means. I'm not saying that I'm not supportive, especially because it's supporting so many businesses. However, um, I do think it needs to be self-sustaining, and I have, and I'm not looking at this as a, I'm looking at this as a person that has used commissary kitchens in the past. Um, I have never had ice supplied to me for free. It has always, I've always had to pay for my own ice. There's a lot of things that, and I don't know what we, um, charge people to use specialty items like, I don't know if they get designated grills or designated ovens or how that works. Um, but I guess my biggest concern is why we have a deficit of a hundred K, a hundred K for a year's time in the Pasco Specialty Kitchen if we have enough vendors to be able to utilize the Pasco Specialty Kitchen? And, um, I think we've upgraded a lot of the equipment. Um, so with that being said, uh, I think the, and this is my personal opinion, but I think that I would like to see money go to some, somebody that needs it more, like code enforcement, um, in hopes that we can help code enforcement out, um, because I think that need is greater than Pasco Specialty Kitchen, in my opinion.
All right. Um, any other comments before we get a motion on this? I'm not seeing, so Mayor Portim, Graham, can you kind of put together a quick motion so we could vote on this?
Um, I will. Mr. Mayor, I move that we reallocate twenty-five thousand dollars from Pasco Specialty Kitchen to code enforcement.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Mayor Portim Graham, to change this, so we have...
Mr. Mayor, this is Eric Ferguson, yeah. I'm not sure, and I'm not sure if, uh, if Kristen's on board and and or on, still online and, um, some, uh, Mattson is as well, but, uh, are we sure about the legality of being able to move that money around in this particular way that the motion's been proposed?
Hi, this is Kristen. Um, yes, the funds can be reallocated to code enforcement, that is an eligible activity as all of these activities are, um, and there's not a cap, um, like there is with public service.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so everything else would stay the same, but just that the, the twenty-five K would be switched around?
Follow-up question.
Okay, so let's, uh, question for our Councilwoman Bros.
Um, Mr. Ferguson, now hearing that this can be reallocated, um, can I just get a feel from the staff, what will happen with PSK if this does not get assigned? Or anything gets assigned?
Um, I think PSK will continue to function as is. Um, this money is never guaranteed, or we weren't sure, the whole money was guaranteed, to be honest with you, and maybe still don't know based on the funding. So again, these are requests to help continue to improve the kitchen and maintain those clients and keep it, you know, help make downtown lively and vibrant. Um, but at the same time, um, prior to the city assuming operations a couple of years ago, and, you know, taking over where it was, the existing equipment was in place and being limped along. So I think the kitchen is in a fairly good spot. It has been traditionally supported by CDBG funds, whether for staffing or support, not just the kitchen, but the overall, uh, overall, uh, program that ran those areas, we'll go with that. So, so yes, if it, if we lose those funds and those are signed elsewhere, then we'll continue to move along without the, those suggested equipment that we asked for.
Thank you. Uh, just a last comment. Um, I think maybe for future requests, it would help the council, um, if you would show a, for, uh, like the year before gains, expenses, how many clients are in there. I know you've done that in the past, you've, you've sent that out, but it might help persuade, uh, the continued support to the PSK.
All right, and I guess we have another question by Councilwoman Blaisdell.
Again, let me make this clear, I support PSK, that is not why I'm questioning it, but hypothetically, if later down the road something happens, we would just have to amend, amend it going forward, is that, am I incorrect?
I would assume if we lose a major piece of equipment, that I would come and ask for a budget supplement based on that for council approval, which would be how we'd do, just like anything, whether it be a pump in the park or a fire engine or anything else, we treat PSK like that. So yes, if there'd be a failure that would stop the overall operations as they are, or have major impact, yeah, we would come back and and update council and see if, if, uh, you know, emergency funds are available versus pre, you know, pre-awarded funds.
Thank you.
Director Mattson?
Thank you. Um, just was seeking clarification, maybe Kristen already knows this answer, but, um, just wondering, as far as direction, that extra twenty-five thousand going to code enforcement officers, since you mentioned it was to help them, I'm just wondering, um, where are you envision that going? Is it to the existing, we have two code enforcement officers currently, one is designated for the low-income, moderate areas. Um, so is that, is that money going towards just supplementing that position more, or what did you specifically mean by assisting code enforcement with those funds?
Are you asking me that?
I'm just asking, since the direction provided was moving twenty-five thousand dollars from DKS to code enforcement officers, what the intent was behind that, just because we manage these funds, and I was just wondering what the intent was, and I'm assuming it's just to go toward salary, so it's not coming out of the city fund?
I hear over and over that we don't have enough code enforcement, we don't have enough, um, hours for code enforcement, so, I mean, how you manage your budget is, I guess, on you, um, but I, I mean, I hear that all day long, uh, especially in the downtown area and with small businesses, so I don't know how you manage your team, um, if that's where you see it needs to be, I just know that code enforcement, we've had lack of code enforcement, um, and I feel like the ship is a little bit tighter over there by what I hear on the, on the ground.
I think what Director Mattson is, um, getting to is you, historically, for code enforcement, this is a, this is essentially, uh, helping the, a general fund, fund by twenty-five thousand dollars, a code enforcement officer. And so the expectation of council, what I'm hearing, is more hours for code enforcement officers, and I do want to clarify that for twenty-five thousand, we clearly cannot hire an additional FDE, but, uh, very likely what your expectations are, that more hours, as in potentially overtime or temporary staff, that would fund, uh, be funded by this twenty-five thousand, i- is, is what I'm hearing, and I think that is what Director Mattson was trying to clarify from council, to make sure that we understand what your expectations are.
I guess, yeah, that's what, what I was thinking, just to bridge the gap of the Madam Councilwoman, that, um, I guess that's what I would envision if we were to move it for, whether it be overtime hours, because oftentimes, one of the issues we, we come up with is not everything in the city happens from eight to five Monday through Friday, and we run into those weekends and evenings and that kind of stuff. And so, yes, um, I would go along with the motion, you know, for that, yeah, for that, um, expanded coverage, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's, uh, move on to Councilwoman Bros.
So, and the line of, in that line of comment as well, so basically, this twenty-five thousand dollars would either be for a wage increase, or a temporary person, or the overtime hours. It, it doesn't bring in another full-time employee, you know, so, so I think that's the clarification you were looking for.
Yes, thank you, that helps. And just wanted to clarify, the CDBG funds need to be in compliance with the HUD program, so there are stipulations, uh, code enforcement should be focusing on low to moderate income areas and in things that tie back to CDBG, which it, there is some good synergy between the two, but just wanted to make sure you knew that, um, that that money would be going towards CDBG-related, um, code enforcement.
All right, and Councilman Joe Cottler?
Is there a plan to get the Pasco Kitchen to solvency, or a plan to make a plan?
I think, um, the way it's been operated in the past, and again, for, for your reference, we assumed operations of it, uh, June twenty twenty-three, when the previous organization running it kind of stepped down, defaulted, so it wasn't something the city has entirely run. Um, it may be actually unique to cities, I know there are several commissary kitchens, but in that manner, um, it has been previously supported by CDBG funds, CDBG funds for various factors, um, as well as some other additional city funds that are available or funding mechanisms, um, which I'm probably not strong enough to speak on tonight, but we could, you know, do a little history lesson on that. So, um, I think the idea of it was, um, as a program, uh, as ran by the previous organization, was to, um, uh, help start additional businesses, particularly in the downtown area, um, help with, uh, new jobs related to those businesses, and then as I've kind of, since I've assumed it, that maybe always was to help bring, uh, faces downtown and help keep downtown lively and bright, you know, lively, bright, vibrant and moving forward, particularly as we develop other areas of the city, we don't want to lose what we have in our downtown area. So, so historically, maybe, I, I believe Kristen could probably speak to, to what we, you know, what has been from CDBG funds and how that was allocated, wasn't always towards equipment, but generally towards operations or supporting special events that they, that we now support as well, like Fiery Foods in Cinco de Mayo or something else that we take on at those times. So, um, but again, the city has supported it, we have, uh, council, current council, previous council has allocated funds from our American Recovery Act funds, previous CDB fund expenditures have been approved, so we have been... So we have been making lots of improvements down there, so it has been well-supported. Um, and to solvent, um, based on the, currently what our revenues are, we'd almost have to double our rates to our current, uh, clients, which I think is probably, uh, not doable. However, a rate increase is probably due now that we, now that I've settled in, my team's settled in, understand how it operates and, and know what some of the other commissary kitchens are. Um, we could look at removing some services as well as, um, the other council, another councilwoman spoke of, or maybe charging additional for some of those services to help offset that. But right now, I believe, based on the size of the kitchen and the activity of the, of the clients we have, we're almost at maximum capacity, so I don't, I couldn't, I could maybe add another five or six based on what those, uh, what those food industries are and the demand for the kitchen. But there's no way I could double this, double the number of clients there to break even is the, is kind of the current pending issue. So getting close, yes, but not having any government subsidies, we like to call them, would be hard to run in its current situation.
Any analysis on how the income being generated from those other businesses are supporting the city?
Um, that's something that used to be reported when those funds were, CDBG funds were being used. There were some reports that were collected, but with the, with the loss of use of the CDBG and specifically for supporting the clients and offsetting some of their client costs, like it reduced some of the rate fee and structure, since we're strictly buying equipment, it hasn't come to need and report that structure, because we have an inventory of that equipment and also a client count. So those are something we can definitely look into and report on, and something I've looked into. I just wouldn't be comfortable speaking on the numbers tonight without looking at our current client list and understanding those. And again, I appreciate the council's decision this evening. It is, you know, it is a sum of money, but it's not a sum of money that will continue to keep the kitchen running forward, but it would make it a bit nicer. So I understand and appreciate the discussion this evening.
Thank you. All right, with that, I'm not seeing any other questions, so we do have a motion on the floor. We have a first by Mayor Protem Graham, we have a second by Councilwoman Blaisdell. Um, let's just do a roll call on this and see where it lands. So just to clarify, the motion is to move 25,000 from the specialty kitchen and move it to code enforcement. So yes would be the moving, and nay would be not.
Okay, um, Councilmember Blaisdell?
Yes.
Councilmember Cotta?
No.
Councilmember Prowlus?
Yes.
Councilmember Brahas?
No.
Mayor Protem Graham?
Yes.
Mayor Milne?
No.
So that's a tie-in, it fails.
Okay. All right, um, doesn't happen often, we got three to three. Um, we want to introduce a new motion, Mayor Protem Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we accept the, sorry, I lost my place here. Um, that we accept the CDBG program allocation and annual work plan, um, number 4653 as presented in the agenda.
Okay, so we have a first by Mayor Protem Graham, we got a second by Councilwoman Brahas. Again, let's do a roll call. Or do we have any discussion on that, or it looks like we're good? So I guess we'll still roll call.
Councilmember Cotta?
Yes.
Councilmember Prowlus?
No.
Councilmember Brahas?
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell?
No.
Mayor Protem Graham?
Yes.
Mayor Milne?
Yes.
It passes four to three, or four to two.
All righty, well, thank you for that. And so now we'll move on to number 10, unfinished business. And we got the adjustment to utility rate and connection fee, water and sewer. And we got our deputy city manager, Rachel Sidell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and evening, council. We, uh, have Brooke Tasha, who's a project manager with, um, Baumann Consulting Group, uh, and our very own Maria Sarah, um, City of Pasco Public Works Director, who will work, uh, who will present today on a pretty, um, in-depth and complex topic of utility rates for water and sewer services, as well as the connection fees. Uh, you heard the public comment today, uh, very, uh, data-centric calculations here that need to be done. Um, and, um, looking at replacement of a Butterfield Treatment Plant, which is almost a hundred-year-old facility, um, so a lot of information to go through, and, um, you are definitely in good hands with these two experts. And with that, I will pass it on to, um, Maria Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. We are talking about water and sewer tonight, and, um, we're gonna look at the overview of, uh, this presentation. We'll start with background and system overview for both utilities, and I will take care of that. And then when we walk into the overview of revenue requirements and calculations, assumptions, and on, uh, I will pass it on to Brooke Tasha, our FCS or Baumann company. Okay, so as you know, the city owns and operates both the portable water system and a sanitary sewer system. Uh, that infrastructure is upgraded and maintained, um, through the use of utility rates. Um, we have revenue requirements to meet. Some of those will be explained in detail as we walk through this presentation, specifically understanding the needs for having reserves and planning for the replacement of infrastructure, as well as being sustainable. So we have talked about other, um, rates in the past, and we have discussed how City of Pasco manages those utilities. We account for them independently, and each of those is self-sustaining, meaning that we do our rate and connection fee analysis to ensure that those utilities are providing benefit to those ratepayers that are paying for those. And our, um, customer base for each of the utilities is slightly different. And we'll get more into detail on that in the next slides. So while I give all the overview, again, the focus of this presentation is to discuss the revenue requirements and the connection charge calculation. Okay, so we're gonna start with water system. This is our portable water system. The, the overall system serves, uh, within city limits, uh, the vast majority of the parcels, and some areas that are in unincorporating Franklin County within the UGA. The system depends heavily on the two water treatment plants. One is the Butterfield Water Treatment Plant. Some of you had had the opportunity to tour that facility. That facility was designed in the 1930s and began operation in the 1940s. Some of the components in the facility are still original. The West Pasco Treatment Plant was built in the 2010s and was recently, uh, um, expanded, sorry, was recently expanded through a series of projects, which are just about wrapping up. Um, Butterfield is our year-round facility. It produces a maximum of 21, 21 million gallons per day, although its nominal capacity is 30 million gallons per day. And West Pasco operates all seasons except winter, uh, and currently operates at 12 million gallons a day, just about, when we finish our phase-two project, and it has plans for expansion to 18 million gallons a day. And that is important, because when Butterfield eventually gets to its replacement, uh, project, we will need reliable water supply to be able to meet our demands, especially during winter. Um, when West Pasco currently doesn't operate, at the time that we're doing those projects, we will switch over and actually have West Pasco operating and Butterfield maybe stop operation. During the summer months, both facilities run at maximum capacity to meet demands. Additional from the treatment plant, we have miles and miles of, uh, a pressurized system for pipelines, uh, valves, hydrants, you, you can imagine the whole system that, that serves our overall city. We have three zones, which are based on elevation, so that we ensure that we have the right pressures in the right locations, and, uh, four storage reservoirs. Some of those are ground level with pumping stations, others are elevated, and of course, we have booster stations throughout the system. Okay, that's a good overview of our system. Now, we have a couple of pictures. You're seeing Butterfield, this is our oldest, biggest water treatment plant. Again, we have a facility plan that identifies the need for full replacement of this facility. And you'll see in the coming slides, several plans or scenarios that we have run to evaluate, um, what are the impacts of the different ways to replace this facility? Either replacing it all at once, or doing it in phases, or doing it in extended period of time. Next picture shows the West Pasco Treatment Plant on one side, and you're seeing the different filtration system through membranes. Again, this is a smaller, more modern facility. And, uh, on the opposite side of the screen, you're seeing one of our reservoirs. And this is just illustration for, uh, understanding what all components exist in the water system. Finally, I, uh, should mention that while the capital projects are delivered through our Public Works Engineering Group, um, our maintenance and operation occurs through our operations team in Public Works, and then there is an environmental team that ensures that we are compliant with discharge permits and solids and so on, that are part of the treatment system. So, um, our operations crews and pump mechanics and others ensure that they can respond to emergencies like water breaks, as you're seeing on the screen. They also, uh, drop meters or install services or repair items that are not working, install hydrants sometimes. Um, and of course, we have our operating team that runs that treatment facility and, um, oversees, um, booster stations and tanks and so on. Oops. We're good, okay. So this next slide has an overview of what a typical capital improvement plan would look like for this utility. And I am calling attention with that orange box to show if we were to accommodate an accelerated schedule for replacing Butterfield, which we understand needs to be replaced and is a massive project. We are talking $220 million to $260 million. Um, if we were to accelerate that schedule in order to replace this facility right away and avoid some throwaway improvements that would kind of allow us to limp along, what we have tried to do is move other projects outside of the time, this very near term, so that we can balance expenditures. So there is no cheap alternative for water, but we, as the people managing that utility, understand that we can't have it all, all at once. And so we have worked diligently trying to move projects, and for each scenario that we work through, this accelerated schedule are seeing a three-phase that is slightly longer in period for replacement of Butterfield. In those cases, we bring some of those projects in the bottom of this list up. Um, and then, of course, in the, in the extended schedule, we are trying to balance so that we don't have any one single year that is really, really heavy in expenditure. So there is a little bit of an art to this, uh, planning for capital improvements. So again, following with that, I would like to point, some of the projects that had previously been shown and approved in capital improvement plans in prior years, that were in this water utility, uh, plan for the near term, have been now moved out in our proposed CIP. And that proposed CIP is what we've used for our rate analysis. Additionally, we, every year when we prepare capital improvement plans, we identify which needs arise from maybe operational needs or, or maintenance concerns. And all those newly identified items, uh, had been in this CIP, uh, scenarios that we've run, scheduled to be further out than the six years. So we're looking at actually 10 years plus. Um, and that is again, to try to balance expenditures, because it's a pretty expensive endeavor to replace a treatment plant. Okay, so that confused my wider presentation, but let's jump onto sewer. Sewer is a little less complex, at least, uh, what we're gonna cover tonight. So the sewer system, as you know, is, uh, wastewater, is, is water that is dirty, so to speak. So it's when, when we have showers, when we flush toilets and wash dishes and so on, that water is then put from the individual parcels onto a system that is owned and operated by the City of Pasco. The, that effluent, um, goes eventually through, through a collection system, which is, again, hundreds of miles of pipeline, uh, onto a treatment plant, where that effluent is treated before it's disposed back into the river, meeting environmental needs. Uh, our system, as I said, is mostly gravity, although we have 17 liftations that address low areas that cannot flow via gravity. So those liftations have force mains, and the liftations are basically pump stations with, with pumps that are pushing that effluent from a low area into, uh, the nearest gravity system, so they can flow via gravity onto, uh, the treatment plant. And we have a picture of our wastewater treatment plant. This is from the recent expansion that occurred via two phases. And again, a picture of the liftation on top, that is a maintenance liftation specifically. And this facility, just like water, relies on, uh, the engineering team to deliver capital projects, an operations team that runs the wastewater treatment plant, pump mechanics that, um, ensure that our pump stations are functioning, and then operations team that ensures they're doing preventative maintenance, they're, they're, uh, jetting, uh, pipelines. They also respond to emergencies like overflow emergencies and manholes, or any backups or other things that occur within the system. Once more, I'm showing you the proposed capital improvement plan. Um, the vast majority of the, uh, items in the light green, so several, many, many projects, you have already seen in prior capital improvement plans from prior years. And then we have added other operational and maintenance concerns. Most of those in the darker colors will be addressed e- either via the capital improvement plan or an O and M budget. Um, and we have, again, tried to balance those expenditures. All those that are in the dark green are replacement in kind, for the most part. So, uh, it's important to mention that the projects within the sewer utility include further expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. Our recent expansion has allowed us to reach nine and a half million gallons per day in capacity, but ultimately, our facility plan indicates that we need, uh, in the order of 12 million gallons per day in order to meet future demands in this facility. And if you're wondering why is there less treatment capacity in wastewater than in, uh, the treatment capacity in portable water, it's because there's some uses that are non-consistent. So some of the water that is produced is actually used for things where water is evaporated or water is used in, um, industrial facilities or that go to PWF, so they do not come to this facility, or for example, for irrigation in select areas of the city. Okay. Um, I think for sewer, it's also important to mention that we are vastly below the US average on staffing, and specifically, we are non-compliant currently, based on the size and complexity of our system, with our own planning documents for that utility. So, uh, the proposal is to add staff members as part of our rate analysis, and this would be staggered, and what we are doing is ensuring we are complying or getting closer to complying with our own planning documents in a staggered way, showing goodwill. Um, it's a good faith effort, so to speak. Uh, and this would allow to, as our system has grown and will continue to grow, having the adequate staffing to respond to the items that, that are happening and the needs of the system for maintenance. So our level of service continues to, to be maintained. So that is a total of 13 FTEs proposed for expansion, which is about one-third of, um, increase which is about one-third of increase from what we currently have in this utility. And with that, I have provided an overview. I'm happy to answer questions on the overview if you have any. But if not, we can move on to the revenue requirement with Brooke Tasha presenting for you. Okay, Brooke.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate it, Maria. And you're going to stay to change the slides for me, right?
I think, I think so.
Okay, thank you. So yes, we can go ahead and dive right into the technical review. We'll start with the revenue requirement. So when we talk about a revenue requirement, we're talking about the total amount of revenue needed to satisfy all utility obligations. We have our direct expenses, things like our operating and our maintenance expenses, our debt service and our capital costs, whether those are rate or debt funded. In addition, we also have our indirect costs. So things like maintaining our reserve levels and meeting our debt service coverage ratios. When we compare our revenue at our existing levels to a forecast of our obligations over a multi-year period, which we really are looking to determine whether our rates are sufficient to cover our forecasted costs. If not, we can develop a plan to meet our needs while minimizing customer impacts to the extent that we can. This next slide, in order to build the forecast, we need to make some initial assumptions. So first, we're going to concentrate on a 10-year period from 2025 to 2034 to show the impacts of the forecast. The rate setting window is going to be a shorter one from 2026 to 2029. We look out over 10 or even 20 years to model impacts from capital investments because they're often really sizable in nature, as we saw earlier from Director Sarah. And it really benefits us to start planning early for them. We typically want to set rates on a shorter period to allow for adjustments to the plan. So as any, good as any plan is, we really know there's likely going to be deviations from it. So setting rates for a shorter three-to-five-year period really allows those natural checkpoints to happen, allowing us to correct course if needed. So to build this forecast, we did use projected rate revenue based off of 2024 actuals plus growth. The growth rate was determined with comprehensive planning documents and is just under 3%. That represents about 550 to 750 new connections annually. For expense forecasting, we're utilizing the city's 2025 and 2026 biannual budget with escalation added for future years. You can see here, we do have a couple additions to the budget. We're assuming a 1.5% increase to the utility tax starting in 2026. And as mentioned just a minute ago, 13 new FTEs are proposed for the sewer utility. Those are also based off of comprehensive planning documents and are required to partially meet compliance with ecology regulations. Overall, expenses are increasing on average between 3 and 3.3% depending on the year. And then finally here, the majority of new debt is going to be forecast conservatively based off of revenue bond financing with a 20-year term, a 5% interest rate and a 1% issuance cost. There's one exception to this. We're going to show a low-interest loan option for the water utility, recognizing the success by staff in seeking out those opportunities. So I mentioned indirect costs earlier. These are often related to financial policies. So for Pasco, we have three main policies that we want to ensure we're meeting. First is our operating reserve, and that's to ensure that we have cash on hand to meet cash flow fluctuations throughout the year. For each utility, we'll aim to keep 60 days of O and M expenses on hand to weather those ups and downs. That's between 1.5 to $2 million for the water and sewer utilities. Next, we have our capital reserve. So this is a place to provide a source of funding for emergency repairs, cost overruns, nothing catastrophic in nature, but are those really unanticipated costs. For this target, we're going to aim to hit 2% of our total asset values each year, which is a little under $3 million for each utility. And then finally, for all revenue bond debt, we'll plan to hit the minimum bond covenant ratio of 1.25. This is a target that's typically outlined in bond covenants to provide security to bondholders. And often showing a higher coverage ratio prior to issuing bonds can help to achieve better ratings amend. So after we set the stage with those financial policies, we can concentrate on the first set of results for the water utility. And looking at the key components for water, we have existing rate revenue that ranges from 16.2 million to 20.9 million in support of O and M expenses that range from 11.8 to 16 million. We've got existing debt service that starts at 4.2 million and decreases to 3.6 million as some loans are repaid. And we've got future debt service that'll range, really depending on the scenario in question, but it could reach as high as 22.1 million within the next 10 years, depending on the pace and the level of capital investment. So although we're going to look at different options for capital funding, in total, the costs are just shy of $350 million in needed investment across the 10 years. Those investments include that full replacement of the Butterfield Treatment Facility as well as the expansion of the West Pasco Treatment Facility. The financial plan will consider a combination of cash, connection charge revenues and proceeds from revenue bonds and low-interest loans to fully fund the capital plan. Total debt in this baseline scenario across the three separate issuances would be about $245 million. So in this next slide, we're going to pull together the components of the revenue requirement in the graph. The bars are representing our expenses while the solid black line is a projection of our revenues at their current levels that only considers growth. The dark gray bars represent the O and M expenses. The orange bars represent existing debt service. And the blue bars represent rate-funded capital or capacity for new debt in the future. You can see that while the water utility is projected to meet those obligations at the existing rate levels in 2025, as we move into the future, rates would become deficient as the utility prepares to take on more significant debt service amounts beginning in 2028, which is shown there by the green bar on the graph. What we see here is that capital is the driver behind the need for the rate increases. But we can talk about a handful of different options to satisfy that deficiency. So we created four initial scenarios for consideration to solve, again, that noted deficiency that we just discussed. First is Scenario 1, which would allow for Butterfield completion by 2030. We looked at funding that CIP timeline with the use of revenue bonds as our sole borrowing mechanism. And then as a subset of that scenario in 1A, we looked at funding that same CIP timeline with partial use of low-interest loans. In Scenario 2, we'd spread the Butterfield construction out over three phases with the treatment plant complete by 2033. Similar in Scenario 2, we looked at revenue bonds for borrowing. But we also looked at a subset of that same scenario in 2A that would again include that partial use of low-interest loans. For each low-interest loan scenario, we assumed $80 million in low-interest loans or about 30% of the total debt requirements that could be funded, again, through low-interest mechanisms. We don't always like to plan on those low-interest loans until we know we have them at hand. But again, city staff has been very successful in pursuing them. So we wanted to include this scenario to recognize the upside that can come from that continued hard work. All right, so here we're going to look at the overall rate increases that are needed based on the scenario and the associated capital completion schedule and the funding plan that aligns with each scenario. Scenario 1, this is the accelerated CIP timeline, would require 20.75% increases through 2028, dropping to 9.5% through 2030, followed by inflationary levels thereafter. Impacts would range from $5.67 to $10.26 a month within that shorter rate-setting period for a typical single-family residence. In Scenario 1A, which includes the assumption of low-interest loans, that rate path would drop to 17.5% increases from 2026 to 2028, followed by 10% increases through 2030. Impacts here would range from $5.50 to $8.19 a month within that rate-setting period. Scenario 2, the three-phase CIP would require 25.25% increases in 2026 and 27, followed by 10% through 2031 and 3% thereafter. Impacts here would range from $5.32 up to $10.72 a month within that, again, that rate-setting period for a single-family residence. And then finally, in Scenario 2A, again, here assuming low-interest loans, we would see that rate path drop to 21.25% in 26 and 27 and 9.25% through 2031. And then finally here, impacts to the rate-setting period range from $4.61 up to $8.74 a month. You can see by comparison of the total residential bill in 2034 that the cumulative impact is lowest for Scenario 1A and highest for Scenario 2. So in this final chart here for the water utility, we'll show comparison of existing residential rates for the city of Pasco as well as some neighboring utilities. Also, some jurisdictions that may not be neighboring but are of similar size or growth rates. At the end of the day, these comparative charts, they really can be apples and oranges because of all the different considerations that have to go into utility rates. Many have different geographies, requirements or different water supply differences. But we do know the question often comes up, but how do we compare? So right now, Pasco is lower on this comparative schedule. The changes we saw on the previous slide would shift the city up this chart to more middle of the pack. But we also know other utility systems will be assessing their rate levels as well and will very likely see the need to increase here. Okay, so for our sewer discussion, we're going to follow a very similar format to what we just walked through on water. For the sewer utility, existing rate revenues will range from 12 to 15.4 million from 2025 to 2034 in support of O and M expenses of between 9.3 million growing to 15.2 million. Existing debt service begins at 2.3 million and increases to 4.1 million. Future debt service is forecast to add about 8.1 million to the sewer utility obligations over the next 10 years to help fund 168 million in capital improvements. $99 million in new debt is forecast across three separate issuances in 2029, 2031 and 2033. And it will be combined with cash, future connection charges and existing low-interest loan opportunities to help satisfy that capital plan. The capital plan for sewer, although not as large as water, still does include the wastewater treatment plant improvements from 2030 to 2034, as well as a number of collection main upsizing improvements as well. So here again, we're going to bring the revenue requirement components together, just like we did for water. So similarly, we have our O and M expenses in that dark gray bar, followed by existing debt service in the orange bar. The blue bar represents our capacity for rate-funded capital or potentially new debt. And again, although we're just meeting obligations in 2025, as those obligations continue to grow into the future, when comparing to revenues at our existing rates, which is shown again by that solid black line, we would be deficient in covering our existing debt service in total by 2026. And that deficiency would grow as we prepare to add additional debt in the future, noted again by the green bar here. So in order to correct the deficiency that we're seeing here, we're looking at 8% rate increases through 2033 before again dropping down to inflationary levels at this point. That 8% increase would represent between a $3.06 and a $3.86 impact on a single-family bill, again, within that shorter rate-setting period. So again, just like water, we'll look at a comparative single-family bill for sewer, a similar group of cities, neighboring jurisdictions or cities of similar size or growth, really here to provide a decent selection of comparatives. Pasco again is on the lower end of this chart and really isn't projected to make it much past the middle of this chart with those 8% rate increases that we just saw on the previous slide. Okay, so we'll shift gears a little bit here to round out the discussion with a discussion of connection charges. So when we talk about connection charges, we're talking about the one-time payments that a new customer pays when they connect to the water or sewer system. These charges are authorized through the RCW UC here, 35.92025. And the idea is that they represent a buy-in charge for new customers to purchase a unit of capacity in the system. It puts them on an even playing field with existing customers who had funded the development of that system. The charge itself is based on the infrastructure that's in the ground today as well as the capacity-enhancing future infrastructure in the utility's capital plan. For the calculation of the charge, this next slide, we look at the existing cost basis, which are our existing assets in the ground today at their original cost. We'll remove any donated assets and can add interest up to a maximum of 10 years per the RCW. The existing cost basis is then divided by all current and future capacity units or total system capacity. The future cost basis consists of future capital costs that'll be incurred to add capacity to the system or meet increasing stringent regulatory requirements. Future costs don't include any repair or replacement-oriented projects, and the costs are spread only across the future added capacity units. The combination of the existing and the future costs makes up that total connection charge for the utility. So here on this next slide, we're going to see what that means for the water and sewer utilities with real numbers applied. First, we'll look at the existing cost basis, starting with the existing assets, again, at their original cost, backing out any contributed assets and then adding the interest provision. Finally, we make an adjustment for debt principal, recognizing that outstanding debt principal is going to be paid for through rates when a new user connects. So the total existing cost basis for the water utility is 106 million and for the sewer utility, it's 81.4 million. For the future cost basis, despite having different capital spending plans, the water with 321.6 million and the sewer with 131.6 million, we end up with a similar future cost basis of 70.2 million for water and slightly more, 72.2 million for sewer. And that's because we have a large amount of capital infrastructure investment that's related to repairing and replacing existing infrastructure on the water side. And that gets backed out of the charge. So while there's still capacity being added, which is represented by that future cost basis, it really does highlight the need to perform the repair and replacement improvements, really regardless of growth, especially on the water side. Finally, here, we're going to divide the existing cost basis by current and future capacity units or total system capacity. And then we'll divide the future cost basis by the future capacity units. So to put that in perspective, the future capacity plan for us approximately 21,000 new units over the planning horizon. The combination of the existing and the future cost basis results in the total charge for a new connection. The connection charge for the water utility is calculated at $6,148 per meter capacity equivalent. So this would be the charge for a 3/4-inch meter. Charges would scale up with meter size based on their meter capacity equivalencies. The connection charge for the sewer utility is calculated to be $4,583 per equivalent residential unit or ERU. And we're going to discuss just a bit more about that in the next slide. So as mentioned here, the water charge would be based on meter size and charges would increase based on the flow capacity of the meter. For sewer, the charge would be that $4,583 for one ERU or one single-family residence. An ERU equates to 249 gallons per day of flow. And the charges for non-residential connections will be calculated based on a projection of flow and the definition of that ERU. The charges also shown are calculated maximum charges. And they can be set at a lower level or phased in based off of policy choices. It's just important to understand that if connection charges are set below their calculated maximum, that rates need to make up the difference. So we're shifting the burden a bit there. So here in this next slide, similar to rates, again, we wanted to show a comparison of connection charges for a similar subset of utilities. So we do show Pasco on the lower end of the scale based off of the average connection charges that are currently being charged. And then depending on the policy decision on connection charges, we may see that move to the middle of the comparative chart there. We're showing that in the combined chart off to the right. So it may move to the middle of that chart at the calculated maximum for water and sewer. And then finally here, we did also want to show some comparisons for our existing charges and the impact of the changes if new connection charges are implemented. Currently, the city charges a combination of a capital expansion fee and a front-footage fee. This charge structure can result in varying fees for similar connections based off of the front edge and the overall size of the parcel. Moving to a connection charge methodology would replace those fees with one new charge. And that charge would be standardized based on the meter size or the number of ERUs, which is often a much more direct nexus between the system capacity that's utilized by a new connection. And as you can see from the chart here, there would be variability both up and down with this change. Right, and finally, what you saw today in terms of rate and capital funding scenarios for the water and the sewer utilities included an assumption that connection charges would be phased in to their calculated maximum over three years. phased in to their calculated maximum over three years. If it's decided not to adopt updated connection charges along with the rate increase strategies discussed, it can be assumed that those presented strategies would need to increase an average of about 1.5% per year from what was shown earlier. So now I'm happy to open it up for discussion, questions. Ideally, the goal is to try to narrow down options for formal consideration and see a plan approved for 2026 implementation.
All right. Well, thank you for that presentation. So Mayor Portemgrim was first up, so let's give him the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was a lot of information to swallow, I guess. So just a couple of follow-up questions in general. Director Sarah, just if you would remind me, how much did the West Pasco Water Plant cost back in the 2010s, roughly?
I don't remember that number. I know what the expansion costed, which was in the order of like just under 30 million for expansion.
Okay. Yeah. No, and I appreciate that. And part of it, I'm just trying to really, I guess, just to keep the fluid thing going here, just to digest some of this, because those are really, really large numbers, obviously, and, you know, just thinking about the new plant there on the west side versus how much it would be to replace Butterfield and just, again, trying to digest how big of a difference that would be, because it sounds pretty massive. Would this plan that's been put together here, I know across various areas of the city, we use treated water for irrigation, water that we've treated already, would this move us away from that in any way?
Not necessarily. So there are areas of the city that use potable water because there is no other available either irrigation district or irrigation utility that can serve them. That's the reality of why potable water is being used. In most cases, it's not a choice. I believe if there is other choice for irrigation, those are more affordable, and therefore customers would opt to utilize an irrigation, either the city irrigation or the irrigation district water.
Because it's not just the plant. We'd literally have to go run a whole new set of pipes, correct, just to feed those systems and all that would be even a lot more expensive, huh?
Yes.
One of the original numbers that was given to set all this was, there was anticipation of growth of 550 to 750 connections a year. Do we, what do we do on average now? Is that about right? Because that seemed kind of a high assumption, from what I recall. And I'm sorry for putting you guys on the spot and asking you all these specific numbers.
I think if you're thinking just residential connections, likely that number looks high, and we can get you the number, but it is considered as equivalent residential units, which actually includes industrial users, and then converted back to be able to have that unit number, right? So it's industrial users, businesses, and so on. So the calculations seem accurate with what our planning documents have been, both on the comprehensive plan as well as the water system or sewer system analysis or master planning, so to speak.
Okay. I appreciate that, because yeah, that's the number that was, you know, based to use to come up with a lot of these numbers. And I guess, if nothing else, I just want to say, you know, that one of the very first things you said is, you know, oh my goodness, this system is nearly 100 years old, and, you know, we are kind of on borrowed time, and I don't think any of us wants to write a check or, you know, pass that on for that amount. But obviously, the system is way overdue to be upgraded, and I know one of the goals of this council, we said again and again, was affordable housing, but at the same time, I think it's really, really important we balance that with the need to keep our, you know, water and sewer systems viable. So I know we need to move forward in this in some way, somehow, but I'm just kind of curious what everybody else's thoughts are, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mayor Portemgrim. Let's go to Councilman Brus.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my, one of my first questions would be, are these rates paying for existing infrastructure? Are these rate increases going to be paying for current infrastructure that probably was paid for with previous rate increases in the general fund?
All infrastructure in water has been paid either through bonds or low-interest loans or the rate utility itself, so it does not mix with general fund. Now, the rates pay for the operation, the maintenance, and eventually the repayment of debt that we enter in order to deliver capital projects. So, for example, in sewer, it's very clear, we got low-interest loans to build the expansion or, actually, it was a replacement and expansion at the same time of our wastewater treatment plant. And the replacement portion of those projects is being paid back by those users of the system, those that have been a ratepayer and those that join in to become a ratepayer.
Okay. In regards to, essentially, have we been undercharging these utilities essentially? I mean, when's the last time we did a rate increase? Was it 10 years ago?
No, we've been doing rate increases on a pretty consistent basis, on a yearly basis, in fact, since at least 2015 or 16. Where we have fallen behind is actually on the connection fees, and that is where you see a pretty significant jump. As, if we can go to that slide where it shows the changes, you'll see $866 for single-family, and again, that varies depending on what your lot size, front footage is. And a slide before that, please. Or one before, sorry. Yeah, right here. So really, that number very likely should have been around 2,000. And so you're looking at not just a jump up between the almost $900 to 2,000, 20 to 100, and then you're adding because you're building a significant more infrastructure in the future.
So I guess, why wasn't this kind of brought up years ago about doing a connection charge fees for both utilities?
I think the city historically has been kind of stuck between, and now we're forced into a situation where we were growing rapidly, but we're also trying to attract developers, we're trying to attract people to City of Pasco. And one of the ways that you do that is make things cheaper. And so I think at some point, it was a policy decision.
You mentioned earlier that we've been increasing rates, but I mean, were we increasing rates 17%, 20% like we're proposing now?
This is a significantly more, I can, we've not, there's been times when we've done double digits, especially in sewer, because there were quite a bit of improvements that needed to be done in that system overall. But when I say double-digit, I believe 10% at most. So this type of increase is not something that we've historically done. But you're also looking at a full replacement of a treatment plant that is a significant project by itself, and so that's what's skewing the numbers quite a bit.
Right. So the biggest reason for the double digits is the Butterfield Treatment Plant Project?
Exactly.
And then that, and that's why it kind of evens out, stabilizes later. Regards to the connecting charges, I don't know, the wording in that seems a little odd with the 10 years of interest. So are you saying that in the last 10 years, if we've made improvements to certain facilities, those connection charges can help pay for those, pay for the interest that we've, essentially from debt that we've taken out?
I would like for Brooke to speak on that. I'm not an expert on it. Brooke, can you take this question?
Yeah. And so really, the interest is meant to represent kind of the time value of money in this calculation. So it's recognizing that in absence of investing in infrastructure, the city could have invested in a fund that earned interest. And so it's also coupled with the fact that this charge requires us to use original costs of our assets, so that means the dollars that you see in those original costs were the exact dollars that were paid in 1985, for example, or whenever the asset was on the books. And so it's really meant to represent that kind of time value of money. And it is allowed per RCW up to a maximum of 10% in 10 years, not to exceed the original cost of the asset.
Could the 10 years be lowered? Could it be like five years?
You know, from a policy perspective, I believe that you guys could choose to do that, yeah.
Yeah, because it just seems kind of odd that we're making, I mean, so we're already going to levy, we're looking at levying connection charges, but then within that connection charge, they're paying for the system that's currently in place, but yet they're paying money to expand the system. So it just kind of seems like a twofer in a way. Or is that not the way we should look at it?
Typically not. I mean, and that's the reason why in the future cost basis, we back out any repair and replacement infrastructure, so we're really trying to ensure that we're not double-dipping in either of those cases. Also recognizing, for example, you know, that replacement cost today, you know, you're really buying into the original costs of those assets. They cost a lot more to replace today as well, so.
When would these, if we approve these rate changes and connection charges, when would they go into effect?
It is, yeah.
So I believe, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, it is up to council, but the goal is for beginning of the year.
Okay. I mean, see, it just seems like a lot. I mean, that's what, 10 grand essentially on a home, on a new home, within that connecting charges? And I know Mayor, Mr. Gonzalez did a presentation a year ago in June saying how, you know, we were in the middle of the pack or lower. Well, I don't think we are now, you know, to be honest. We're, you know, you saw those, all those tables, progress, I mean, we're going to be, you know, up to the higher end, so I guess my biggest concern would be halting, would be the halting of building, because, and then also the increase of housing costs, because they're going to pass the cost on to someone.
And as Ms. Tasha mentioned, as a policy decision, that there is the highest amount that you can apply, which is that $6,148 for water and sewer. You have, you can make a policy decision to be anywhere from zero to that highest allowable. You cannot go above that highest allowable. And water and sewer, some of our utilities, they're considered to be enterprise funds, and enterprise as in a business. And so the money, they have to be self-sustaining, and if they're not, then next time when you need to do a big infrastructure replacement and you need to get bonds out, you'll have a hard time finding investors for those bonds. And so it really needs to be that self-sustaining funds, and hence what Ms. Tasha mentioned is if it's not connection fees, then the rates have to come in a little bit higher. It's a larger base, so it's, but it's a little bit higher to make up for those funds, so that the fund itself can be self-sustaining.
Yeah, and I see at the, and she didn't talk about it, but there was a rate forecast comparison with half the connection charges.
That is right. You have, in your staff report, you have a scenario that has a connection fee, half of the maximum allowed, and rates that correspond to that.
Okay. Yeah, just a little bit to think about. I kind of have my mind made up, but I'll look forward to kind of seeing what the council decides.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you for that, Councilman Brus. If any other... All right.
Mayor, in terms of direction, would you like for staff to bring this to you in the next regular meeting, or would you like a little bit more time than that to think about this issue? Or if there's any other information that you would like to, for us to bring forth in the next couple of meetings?
I know there's a lot of information tonight. What are we saying, council? Let's start off with Councilman Brus.
I'm ready to move forward at the next regular meeting on this.
Councilman Carter?
I agree.
I would say no.
Councilman, no? Mayor Portemgrim?
I could probably digest this a little bit more. Thank you.
Okay. Let's give it a couple extra weeks and see where we're at on that. All right. So that moves us to 10B, updated traffic study requirements and scoping policy. We got Director Haley Mattson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This should be a more exciting item for the group compared to what we've talked about tonight. So we have a traffic impact study requirements and scoping policy update for the group. If you'll recall, earlier this year, the city initiated a TIF program, Traffic Impact Fee Program, that divided the city into distinct districts for traffic purposes, and a fee is now assessed in those different areas if you develop. And that was in an effort to streamline our process related to traffic impact fees and make it more clear and understandable to use for applicants, and then identify projects that need to be fixed globally throughout the city. So that occurred, and this is a follow-up and related item to traffic impact fees and studies, and this relates to the scoping that is required for applicants as far as what middles need to be provided for traffic impact analysis and traffic review at the city. So I wanted to be sure and thank the staff in CED who worked on this, and want to start with Brian Cartwright, our Development Services Manager. He helped put this together, and he had help from Curtis Schlebe, sorry, it's been a long day, Development Services Lead, and then Ivan Bargan, our Planner Three, who's actually in the audience today, listening to the meeting, and then Craig Reiman, our Deputy Director, and other staff. So I just wanted to thank our staff. They are the folks that are working on these things in the background, and I'm excited for the applicants and for city council to see the changes we've made. So next slide here. So to, we elected to update this policy just in our ongoing efforts to streamline development review within the development process and make things more streamlined and clearer and more certain for applicants. So in doing this update, we reviewed policies in our neighboring jurisdictions, Richland, Kennewick, and others, and looked at our old process, our thresholds, and found a way to make it more streamlined for the applicants. So the key, key components of this update, there's a couple different pieces here. So first is just providing a scoping outline in general that previously wasn't as clear to applicants and the development standards, you know, you needed to navigate through that and almost always talk to a staff member if you were new to the community and wanted to know what the scoping process was like. So now we've attempted to scope traffic reviews earlier in the process so that an applicant doesn't come in, submit a full-on traffic report that they've spent all this money on, only to find out in the first review, hey, you've missed key intersections, or you've missed data that needs to be included in the report. So we are trying to capture the applicants earlier in the process, have the development review, technical review committee, and go through these scoping procedures. And before this scoping was completed, and I'll get to it in a second, we created a website for the traffic impact fees, so the applicants can now log in and see what fees are owed for different districts, and there's even a calculator online that they can use to estimate their fees without even coming into city hall, so they can use that and staff can use it as well. And so the scoping process here, for 25 or more PMP hour trips, and for those of you that don't know, PMP hour trips are the time period between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. during, I believe, the weekdays, is when we see the most traffic and congestion on the road. So those are the trips that we want to look at closely, because in theory, that's when most people are on the road and using, using the lights and the system, so the fees are based on PMP hour trips. And the requirement for trip generation letter has not changed, so if you have 25 trips or more, you're still required to give us a letter, and that outlines like how many trips and where the trips are going for the initial review. The traffic impact analysis report, where you do an additional level of detail, and this is usually where a traffic engineer needs to be hired and a full analysis is provided, that threshold has been increased to 100 trips. So before, if it was 50 trips or more, PMP hour trips, that study was triggered. But with our new TIF program in place and our fees, we are now requiring a traffic impact analysis for 100 or more trips. So this will reduce the amount of reports required by the city for applicants. And then the scoping process outlined in your packets just really breaks And then the scoping process outlined in your packets just really breaks it down in a very easy way. Here's what you do with traffic from start to finish, and here's the requirement. So it's outlined, it's an administrative document that we'll be linking online for applicants to use. And so this exercise was meant to increase efficiency and transparency for applicants and make the process easier to understand. When I first arrived, I know staff were working very hard with applicants to organize this, and I think after the TIP program came in place, we were able to really organize it a lot better and even, you know, spoke with different applicants on what they'd like to see. So we've built this out, and I believe it'll save the city time and money and applicants when preparing the reports. And I did want to qualify the requirement for the traffic study. The general rule of thumb is 100 trips, but there are some unique factors that could trigger the need for a report if there's less than 100 trips, and that is listed here on the screen and then further vetted in the scoping analysis. There's some, the key aspects that could require a report. But overall, the instructions are much clearer now. We are trying to front-load these requirements, and our goal is to get a reduced amount of back and forth between the consultants. Since we don't have a traffic engineer on staff, it's really important that staff help bridge the gap, but we don't have a traffic engineer on staff that can really comfortably advise on complex traffic issues, and I know that's a frustration for applicants when they come in and they just want a few questions answered. And if it gets too technical or too engineering, that's not a word, but if it gets too technical for the staff or for me, when they're asking, you know, that's where we do need help from the consultant, but what we're trying to do is at least get a good process in place that our staff, who are not trained as traffic engineers, can use a checklist, guide people through the process. So I think the changes we've made so far in the last few months have been really helpful, and getting this online and walking through it with the applicants should be a good streamlined change. And eventually, when we can get our permit system on the portal, there'll be instructions for people when they upload materials, and we can do a little information icon that applicants can click on when it's time for them to upload the traffic's middle or something related to traffic. This will, this can link them to the scoping, so we can, we can make the technology work a lot better in the future with this. For now, it'll be linked on the website, and then later on, when we update our permit system, we'll have these in here, and we will use these. And if there needs to be updates to clarify certain sections based on feedback from applicants, we will, we will do that.
All right, well, thank you for that. Let's start off with Councilman Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. Yeah, I like that we're doing this. My only recommendation would be to increase from that 25 to 30 trips for the trip generation letter, just because I would just like to see regional consistency. Kennewick does 30, Richland does 30, I think the Wasdott guidance is 30, so I'm not sure why we're going to stay at 25. I say we just bump it up to 30, and then I think everything that you presented looks great. So that would be my recommendation to the council, and I can make a proper motion for that, unless the staff would provide info as to why they want to keep it at 25.
And I don't have that answer tonight. I would like to at least look into why that's the case, because when we did look at this, we wanted to match other cities, so there may be a reason. But if that's the direction provided, you know, it's five trips, I'm thinking it should be okay, but I just don't know the answer to why it's at 25 still.
I have no problem with 30 myself, but if you want to give us some feedback, I'm good with that as well. Let's move on to Mayor Portem-Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just wanted to briefly say thank you, Ms. Mattson, for just coming in here with all the energy you've had, making all the changes you've had. I mean, obviously, we've all received a letter about the impact, the positive impact you're having within the development community, within staff, and just all the way around. I just want to tell you, I really, really, really appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
I'd like to echo those thoughts as well. It was nice to read the nice letter, and so thank you for all your hard work. I'm not seeing, let's jump back to Councilman Prowls. Okay, well, I guess he's done.
How about this, I can, we can plan on changing it to 30 and just move forward with that. If there's some, something I'm missing, then we'll give you an update in either the City Managers' Report or a quick update at the next meeting at the end when it's time for directors to jump in and say something.
Okay, sounds like the plan. All right, let's move on to number 11, which is new business. I'm not seeing anything listed. And move on to 12, which is miscellaneous discussion.
We do have Harold online. There is a City Managers' Report that is on your agenda, and this is one of the first that Harold has implemented, and this is for council's use and for public as well to see what the staff is doing and the communication from the City Manager to council as well, outside of all of the meetings that you're in with Harold. And I'm looking at Harold's mic, and I'm not seeing him unmute, so if you have any questions, concerns, more than happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't have a comment.
No, so I guess, let's go on to Councilman Blaisdell.
This is the most detailed City Managers' Report I've ever seen, and I appreciate it very much. I know what every single department is doing, and even like, it's just very detailed, and I appreciate it, and I know the public will also appreciate it. So if they have concerns, they can also read it and see what everyone's, like, the transparency is there. So I appreciate everyone that's contributed to that, and that just shows that we picked the right city manager for the job, so thank you.
All right, good to hear. Let's go on to Councilman Prowls.
I will be quick. I, you know, everyone knows I'm avid. I go to a lot of sports events, and I just want to let people know, and the community know that one of our own was SWX Sports Athlete of the Month, Jaden Williams from Pasco High School Football Team.
Well, good to know. All right, well, thank you for that. I'm not seeing any other ones, so there's nothing on number 13, which is executive session.
Mayor, if I could go back to miscellaneous section?
Okay.
I do apologize. I do have a few more items, and I will be quick. This week, Officer Aleah Vargas will have completed her probationary period and will be presented with her permanent badge on Thursday, October 9. And on Wednesday, our Public Works Deputy Director, Mary Heather Ames, will be presenting to the Legislature Joint Transportation Committee in partnership with Wasdott South Central Region Administrator Brian White to highlight the safety concerns on US 12 between A Street and Tank Farm Road. And this is a great opportunity for us to present this regional priority project and request funding. Also, on this very same day, our Public Works Director, Sarah, will be presenting at Infrastructure Assistance Coordination Council, IACC Conference in Wenatchee on funding strategies and share Pasco's successes at securing funds, which they're known in the state for and maybe a little bit disliked for it out of jealousy. And because of all of the work that they do, we have received a Public Works Board Construction Loan Fund at the, at $3.5 million for Louis Street Underpass, and that will help us meet all of the requirements set forth by BNSF to fill in the underpass that we've been, we've been struggling to find funding for, so.
All right, well, thank you for the positive news. We much appreciate it. So now I'll jump to number 13, executive session. I'm seeing none listed, so move up to the beautiful number 14, which is adjournment. Thank you.